And actually, Mr. Blocker, I appreciate you being there because I was looking on my schedule to make sure where I was and I saw you in a dolt. So, and yeah, we'll go ahead and begin. Yeah, I know. They'll hear us from out there. Could you just see if Ms. Powers is out there? Thank you. If she is covered, bring her in. He would too.
Well, I think, you know, I can't hold a candle to speeches.
Well, you know, it's true. You can give us baseball statistics stuff pretty good.
The great speeches, great speeches from the kids. That was a great way to start the meeting off.
Outstanding. They're really special. And I told the young lady that she needed to get her book published so that we could all be happy.
And here she comes.
That's okay, Ms. Powers. The deputy said he would use handcuffs to assist her. Okay, Mr. Blocker, finance, approved budget amendment number five, January 2015. You go right ahead.
Just a couple of changes to the general fund, mainly decrease the appropriations for salary benefits is the big change, net increase to the fund balance is about $247,000. Food services, same thing, changes, decrease the appropriations to salary benefits, about $42,000, which increased the fund balance there. And then on the special revenue, just essentially a reduction in revenue, so the corresponding reduction in appropriations.
Board members?
I'm going to approve budget amendment number five. Second?
I have a motion by Ms. Bryant, a second by Ms. Balfour, to approve budget amendment number five, January 2015. Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries five zero.
And I'll stand in to do the goal of...
Go right ahead.
Goldbron has presented to you the personnel information.
I make a motion to approve the instructional support recommendations.
Second?
I have a motion by Ms. Balfour, a second by Mr. Dodd, to approve the instructional and support recommendations. Oh, I'm sorry. Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries five zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And Mr. Dixon?
Yeah, any board members?
Good afternoon.
I believe the item before you is to approve to advertise for a public hearing on May 12th to consider the attendance boundaries for the elementary, middle, and high school, and no changes are proposed this year. I have my report in your back of material, and I can talk about that if you want to talk about that now or later. I intended to go through it on May 12th.
But there aren't really changes.
No, ma'am, I don't...
I like those.
Now, I'd like to make a motion to approve the request to advertise for a public hearing at the May 12th, 2015 school board meeting to readopt the current attendance boundaries for 2015-16 school year with no changes for elementary, middle, or high.
Second?
I have a motion by Ms. Balfour, a second by Ms. Powers, to approve request to advertise for a public meeting at the May 12th, 2015 school board meeting to readopt the current attendance boundaries for the 2015-2016 school year with no changes for elementary, middle, and high school. Any questions or comments?
There you go. Here.
He'll be happy. Absolutely. And Mr. Dixon? It happened yet, purposely. I had a question.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Dixon. Mr. Dixon, this is something we, is required annually by statute for us to review and monitor.
Yes, we, every year, we take a benchmark enrollment in December, and we do a report in early January, go to the long-range planning committee and determine whether or not we need to make any attendance boundary changes or whether we want to propose any construction projects.
Thank you, Mr. Dixon. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments, board members? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries five zero. Budget update.
Real quick, a few things, since we last met, of course, we have all district staff going over, looking at the general fund budget, much like the presentation we shared with you in the last budget workshop. We've also met with all the capital budget administrators to kind of give them an outlook and a forecast on the capital budget to come back and start presenting those. Last week, we also met with every elementary and middle school to sort of the staffing and the FTE council and how staff will be issued out there as far as what they're allocated for staff to student ratios. So, all those things are taking place to then prepare for y'all the next budget workshop in April, so that we have a kind of a good sense of where we're headed. Also, just want to bring your attention, as I reported back in the last budget workshop, the Medicaid issue is rearing its head. And it was something I said that we needed to be aware of and to take notice of, and it is coming to, I guess, somewhat of an issue in the budget. There's been talk about the budget that was presented by the governor may not have much legs now because of this issue with the Medicaid has not been resolved. So, there's going to be a lot of conflict, a lot of conversation, and to see where it's all going to land. But I did forewarn y'all that that could be an issue, so. Also, we did pay off the tax anticipation note February 27th, that is paid in full, so that we paid it off a month early, just to get it off the books and be done with it. And tomorrow, no, I'm sorry, Friday, Christopher Primary School bond, the last payment will be made on that, so that will be...
All right.
Been in communication with Bob Gang, our bond attorney, special tax counsel, who is going through the logistics to make sure everything should be good to go with that, talking to our trustee to make sure that should be final. So, just wanted to report that to you.
Excellent.
Okay, thank you.
Before Mr. Blocker steps down, let's not, I spoke to Commissioner Stewart, and she's asking us to make sure that we speak to all of our local legislators because the government's budget, which includes the 7165 for poor students, us, they feel like that's really in jeopardy, and they also feel like some of the legislators are looking at that's an easy piece of the pie. So, if you can cry, rant, rave, or whatever, she said that she's asking all supervisors to meet the local legislators, and I know that you're all...
Thank you, Ms. Hemel. And educational services, Mr. Clark? Or I should say, is it, or Mr. Heber? Thank you, Mr. Clark. Good afternoon, Mr. Heber.
Good afternoon, everyone. You had questions about Rosetta Stone?
You're presenting for us approval for Rosetta Stone Foundations...
And I know there were some questions, so I wanted to be able to answer them.
Yes, so if you could just go ahead and go through it with us. Go through the request, I'm sorry.
Okay. Okay, the request is, we're trying to purchase the Rosetta Stone program, which we've had in our district for at least over 15 years, I know. This particular product is an updated product of what we had been using before. It's five annual installments totaling $43,000. We received Title III funding, which is funding from the state to help with language acquisition for our students. And this particular product, which again, we've used, is installed locally on computers. This product is a web-based product. We'd be able to install it on iPads, which we purchased with this funding last year as well to help with our students. With this product, they would have access 24/7 to be able to acquire the, help with them understanding the English language. And know that this is for our students within the first year or two of being in the United States to help them understand. If you've ever looked at Rosetta Stone, I know, you know, we all, you know, speak English, so we might want to use it to learn Spanish or other languages. This is the English version, so if students coming to us, doesn't matter what language they teach, or no, it doesn't matter what age or grade level, it could be kindergarten student all the way up to adults that could access this, and they would be able to go in and help them learn and acquire the language. So, that's really the purpose of it. If, the way we have it written, if we don't have the funding from the state, then we would be able to, you know, take, get out of the contract. When we looked at doing a one-year contract, which we can do that, it would cost us 500 additional dollars each year to do that. Our budget for Title III is very small, about $20,000 a year that we get, so it would, you know, to me greatly impact the budget by having to do a one-year contract. We know this product is successful. We've used it for over 15 years. This is just a more robust product that we're able to use, and I think it's something we should consider.
How many students will be served with it?
We have access for over 100 students to be able to use the product. And that, the nice thing about the way this worked, the old product, we had a CD, you had to install it. So, student was at Citrus High School, you installed the CD, they use it. That student leaves, we want to use it, we've got to take the CD out, transport it over to Crystal River High School, install it on a computer there for that student to use. This, it all can be done remotely. We get on the computer, we just switch and move access codes, and it can be done seamlessly. So, it's very easy. But it's about 100 students we can use.
So, when you say 100 students, that we can use, that we can service...
Right.
Does that mean that we have 100 ELL students right now?
We have about 150, but we'd only need about 100 because we have 150 students identified as what we call English language learners, but only about 100 of those would be students that are new and that would need the product and would use it, yes.
And there's a way to qualify and to see who...
Yes. We have a whole team. Karen Jordan and Christina Touchton are here on the ELL team. Karen facilitates our high school students, secondary, and Christina, the elementary, and they help kind of go through that process with the schools.
So, the difference, though, is that the current program, you have to download to the computer, or this is web-based?
Right, and it can be used on the iPad. The old program that we had was only, could be used on a, on a computer, and so students wouldn't have the access to take at home. Right now, we have iPads that we purchased for our L students to use, so they can actually take it home and use it more than just 30 minutes in a lab if they happen to get that opportunity to do that.
And how much does it cost currently? I mean, what's...
Well, when we purchased it years, it doesn't cost anything. I mean, we have, you know, we have the old version, we have the old computerized version, but they don't support it, Rosetta Stone doesn't support it, because they've moved to this new platform, as you know with any company, when they move to something else, they stop supporting that particular product. We can still use it, and we still have those licenses available, that schools can still use that. We just can't use it on our iPads, and we can't use it as well as this new product is able to do. And again, the money that we have is very focused on language acquisition, this Title III money, so why couldn't use it for other things? We are very limited what we can use the money for.
So, $20,000, that's we get per year?
Every year. But if something were to happen, and the state were to say we don't have it, then we can say to Rosetta Stone, "We don't have the funding, so we don't, we can't use it."
Do you think you can get out of that?
Right, if we need to, based on funding.
See, if the parents who don't speak the English language, would they use it?
I mean, the parents could obviously access, but again, know that it's geared towards, if you've ever looked at Rosetta Stone, you know, for some of the other languages, it kind of takes you along. So, we'll start out, maybe teach it, here's what a plate is, and here's what a dog is. So, the kid might be further along, if this parent tried to go in and do it, that could affect. But apparently, do along with the child, I mean, certainly, they could sit together and do it, wouldn't be an issue.
At home?
Yes.
All right. And then about the old one, the discs?
The old one can only be used on the computer that it's loaded on, so it would not be able to be, I mean, we could probably send it home if, you know, if we felt like we wanted to do that, since we have the new ones on the iPad. We haven't made that determination, what we would do with those yet.
Now, I remember, you know, I had worked at Bill's School, some of the parents, they were Chinese, and actually, the children spoke the English, but the parents, the children were helping the parents learn the English and English.
And that was the nice thing about this being on the iPad, is then they would have that option to take that home, because we did purchase those last year with our Title III money to provide that. Because we know that's a challenge, kids come into the school, and, you know, here we are assessing them on assessments, and they don't even know how to speak the language or understand the language, so this is an opportunity for them.
And I asked you before, and you just answered the question, repeated, so everyone can be answering, I asked you if maybe children who speak English could benefit from using this, and I think you said that it's primarily ELL, and therefore, it would be not used properly in the sense of the license and everything.
Right, it's really for the purpose of acquiring that language. You know, you want to learn a second language, you want to learn Spanish or Russian, you could buy the Rosetta Stone, and that would help you acquire the language, not necessarily be able to read it or understand it as well, but at least have that basic knowledge of how to speak a little bit of it. So, that's what it's really able to help our kids do.
Thank you. Thanks for the clarification. Hey, I'd like to make a motion to approve the Rosetta Stone Foundation's K-12 Silver Language Learning Fixed Terms Site License in five annual installments totaling $40... Do I need to read everything?
Yes.
Okay. I can't just say item... Okay. All right, so, I left off with totaling $43,010, which includes an online professional development session.
Second?
Okay. Thanks.
Ms. Powers, here's Ginger. I have a motion by Ms. Balfour, a second by Ms. Bryant, to approve the Rosetta Stone Foundation's K-12 Silver Language Learning Fixed Terms Site License in five annual installments totaling $43,010, which includes an online professional development session. Any more discussion or comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries five zero.
And Mr. Heber, thanks so much for giving us a lot of...
Good afternoon, members of the school board, Superintendent Miss Hemel, Assistant Superintendent Mr. Mullin, and School Board Attorney Mr. Bradshaw. For our curriculum update, thought it'd be a good idea for Ms. Wirthaler to provide you some information and update in regards to the professional learning and professional development that we've engaged in for this year. I placed this into your Dropbox, so it is in your, in your files. So, I'll turn it over to Mrs. Wirthaler.
Good afternoon, Ms. Lindy.
Good afternoon, board members, superintendent, Assistant Superintendent Mr. Mullin. I was walking up, so, I'll be okay. Keep it deep breath. Okay. I really expected this later in the agenda, so I was preparing for my next...
Just pretend we're kids, elementary kids, and then you're good to go.
I got it. Tonight, for the curriculum update, we thought it would be a good time to bring you up to date with the different professional learning activities that have been going on in our district this year, since the beginning of the school year. So, to begin with, always connect to our mission and our purpose, and the professional development department mission is connected to fostering academic and social growth for all of our students via continuous improvement strategies, but really by making sure we assure those through, by offering high-quality professional development for all staff members. So, in considering professional development, there are several things that really must fit together, and if you look at our big rocks or our big puzzle pieces, there are teacher evaluations or evaluations of personnel, and in considering how that links to professional development involves making sure all participants have a good understanding of the expectations, and that our administrators are also consistent in evaluative practices, and that we, as our evaluation system is all based on high-impact and effective strategies, how we support those and how we can help to continue to grow in that. So, that's professional development that's connected in that. We also have technology. Technology integration is huge. That has, it has a big support to our students and an impact on student achievement, and so the professional learning that's connected to that involves how do we integrate that into our classroom to support learning, but then also the professional learning for our adults are having to use that. There are so, as we all know, technology is moving at a very fast pace, we're in that world, but our students, yes, they can figure out how to hack into or and around our firewalls, and we're still trying to figure out how they did that. So, it's incumbent on us to be continuous learners and to feel comfortable with the technology that's available to us and to our students. Student achievement is huge. Student achievement is really what we are about, so the professional development connects to that as well, and the different things that we need to do in understanding what our students know, what do they, and what do we need them to know to help them be successful and to be successful in school. Curriculum kind of is connected to all of those things. Our curriculum is connected to what we need to understand the new curriculums and the standards that our students are responsible for, the curriculum that's connected to the evaluations, technology, and student achievement. So, when you consider professional development, effective professional development is about four, four main things. First of all, there needs to be, you have to have a needs assessment for it to be impactful and to make a difference in the classroom ultimately. We need to have a need, okay? What is that need? And we need to consider those needs as we, as we determine what topics we will be offering and that we need to focus on. Then there is the delivery of that professional development. There's many different styles of delivering and participating in professional learning, and there, we have to come up with various methods that are going to ensure transfer to the classroom, because that's the next piece. Once we've gone through some professional learning, we need to look at the implementation, how making sure that everyone who participates in professional development has an opportunity to go back and implement what they have learned. And then, at the same time, we need to then evaluate the impact of that learning. If it is not being successful, what more do we need to do so to provide support? So, really, those four components are critical in professional development. So, another goal in professional learning is that we want to make sure we're building capacity, building capacity in our teachers, in all participants, so that we can implement and sustain best practice within our school system. So, it's the same type of questions. We have to determine what it is we want the students or the adults, the teachers, the participants to learn, determine how we're going to learn it, how we're going to know when it's been learned, and what we're going to do differently if they have not learned it. So, those are the big components.
Ms. Lindy, I'm going to just ask you, if you would, to just hold on a second. We have a 5 o'clock, and so, if you could just pause for a second, and first, what we're going to do is go to the superintendent's Making a Difference Award. Yes?
Today, we're going to recognize a student from Forest Ridge Elementary, and I will turn it over to Ms. Wyndham, and if he would like to come on up, we'd love for him to come on over.
Well, it's my pleasure to introduce Vincent LaHera to the board and to our many guests. Vincent was a recent Forest Ridge Tropicana speech first-place winner, and we were very proud of his accomplishments. Well, he took his message in his speech to Tallahassee recently, and was able to meet with some legislators, and he is also going to meet with some legislators in the very near future again, trying to get his message across, and his message is about testing. And Vincent's going to present to you his speech. Everything is a test. Test this, test that. Aren't you tired of tests? I know I am. First the old, and now the new. All of us kids have to go through this. From the moment we step into third grade, all we hear about is this test that determines our future. Then we're told that we have to take it until we finish high school. Who are they kidding? Our biggest concern as 10-year-olds is who we're going to play with that recess and what we're going to eat for lunch. Every Friday, we have to take a test to prepare for a test like this. We have to field test the test before the test to see if the test is a good enough test for us to test on. The future of my education hangs on the outcome of this one test. Oh, I forgot to mention the beginning of the year test, the middle of the year test, and the end of the year test. We have to take these on top of the FSA, and they want us to improve each and every time that we take them. Are these tests really to show how smart we are? I don't think so. All they do is put unnecessary pressure on us and make us bored. Do, 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 do. And yet, we still worry about how we did on it. The FCAT was hard enough. This test, the FSA, Florida State Assessment, isn't even made yet, and to think that we have to take it in April, they don't even want to know the answer, they want to know how we got it. The FSBA, Florida School Board Association Resolution on Assessments and Accountability, is asking the governor, Florida legislator, and the State Board of Education to not only use state testing to judge a student, but various data to show a student's performance. People are signing a petition to pass this. If you look at it from my perspective, are all these tests really necessary? I understand they want to see how smart we are, but it's just a hassle for us. You can do your part to help stop all these tests by contacting our governor and tell him to put a stop to all this madness.
Yes, if you want to have all your parents stand up and, if mom stand up? On behalf of the Superintendents Association, our School Board Association, our school district, and every kid in the state of Florida, we thank you for making that effort. We tell them all the time, they're not letting our kids be kids, and when they mess with three sets of lunch, I have an issue too.
Good job.
give countless hours of support to our school community. This afternoon, I have the pleasure of recognizing two of our volunteers who will represent our district as outstanding school volunteers at the state level. One that will be for the adult division, one for the senior division. The Outstanding School Volunteer Award is presented annually to school volunteers who have shown outstanding dedication and commitment to quality education in Florida. The recipients of the award today come from Forest Ridge Elementary, and...
Yay!
So, the Outstanding School Volunteer in the Senior Division for 2015 is Ms. Bernice Ms. Benstock is known to the staff and students as Ms. Bunny. So, this is Ms. Bunny. She has been volunteering at Forest Ridge Elementary for 12 years, since they opened their doors, and over 1,500 hours of volunteer service. Now, heard she works a lot with technology support, with the iPad rollout, computer uploads, installing programs. She's a big support to, it goes around, I understand, with CART every Monday, trying to fix whatever computer needs to be done or uploading programs. So, we do appreciate your countless hours of dedication to our students and the support of our school district.
Awesome.
Mr. Kenny, I think you...
And in the adult division, I present to you Gail Fay, also from Forest Ridge Elementary. And in the adult division, I present to you Gail Fay, also from Forest Ridge Elementary. Ms. Fay has been volunteering at Forest Ridge Elementary for three years. She comes in four days a week, Monday through Thursday. She works in kindergarten classrooms, she works in third grade, and in the art classrooms. She helps with preparing materials, she assists with struggling readers by listening and helping them, encouraging them to continue on, and she provides assistance support throughout the school. So, we thank you. She has, just in her three years, 962 hours that she has dedicated to our students and our school systems. Thank you very much, Ms. Fay.
Stephen was kind enough to just let me, but I kind of took it wrong. Ms. Beverly Howard, would you come forward, please? Board members, I'm just going to move an item up here, if there's no objection, on the sidewalk proclamation, because we have the presentations going on. And Ms. Himmel, I'll turn it over to you, and then if you'd like to turn it over to Ms. Howard.
I'd like to introduce Ms. Beverly Howard. She's been a warrior for a sidewalk of homeless assets, and we'll turn it over to you.
Today, I just wanted to thank you for offering to support us in our desire to get a multi-use trail on US-19, and this is going to be from Cardinal Lane south down to 98 on 19, because we lost a student. One of our students, and one of my students, my former students, passed away and died on December 30th. And that evening, I got many different phone calls from former students saying, "What can we do, Ms. Howard? What can we do? We've got to do something." And we said, "Well, you know what? We'll start a trail, and we'll see. We need a trail, we need a trail, we need a sidewalk." That's what they said first. Anyway, it's evolved, and we've got lots of good support. We've had 10 articles in the newspaper so far, three editorial page articles, top flap Sunday articles, very, very good community support, and we've met with every committee of the MPO. So, we're real excited to say that we were hopeful that we'll be able to get that trail, so lots of lives will be saved. It's a dangerous stretch, it's a three-mile stretch, and the trail was already in the plans for 2040, and we're just asking that the trail be elevated to the 2016-2021 MPO Transportation Alternative List. High priority, very well needed. Lives will be saved, many will be saved. It's a good thing, 1,200 Facebook lives, 1,752 signed petitions with physical addresses in two months.
Outstanding. Ms. Himmel, would you read the proposed proclamation?
Citrus County Schools' Proclamation. Whereas Citrus County School District believes in providing safe transportation for our students and the residences of Citrus County, whereas residents and homeless assets who cycle or walk as their only means of transportation are forced to share the shoulder of US-19 with vehicles traveling at speeds in excess of 40 miles per hour in order to work or purchase food and supplies needed to live. And whereas a 15-year-old Citrus County School student, Clayton Story, lost his life while commuting along the dangerous stretch of roadway. And whereas in 2014, a multi-use trail for US-19 and homeless assets was proposed by the Citrus Hernando Metropolitan Planning Organization for completion by 2040. The Citrus County School Board supports the advancing of the trail to the 2016-2021 Transportation Alternative List. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the School Board of Citrus County, Florida, supports the advancing of the multiple-use trail project on US-19 from Cardinal Lane south to US-98, and that said project should be moved to the top of the 2016-2021 Metropolitan Planning Organization's Transportation Alternative List and the Sidewalks for Safety Advocacy Initiative approved the 10th day of March 2015. Signed, Thomas Kennedy, Chairman of the Board, Sandra San Himmel, Superintendent of Schools.
Board members, could I have a motion to accept this proclamation?
I'd like to accept the proclamation. Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Powers, a second by Ms. Balfour, to approve the proclamation as read. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Proclamation passes 5-0. Thank you, Ms. Howard, and very best of luck. Please continue to keep us posted. Mr. Stephen, thank you so much, and thank you for letting us just get that taken care of.
Thank you very much for having me back. For those of you who haven't met me yet, I'm Steve Marbury, the Executive Director of the Citrus County Education Foundation. This is my quarterly update, I think it's about October last time I was here. I want to start off by talking about a newer program that we have called Schools Spare Pays. I mentioned this at last year's March update. We were in negotiations with the company at that time. We have gone ahead and signed a contract with them. I made a kind of easy diagram here to explain simply what they do, using our first business that has signed on, the Citrus County Chamber of Commerce. So, when anyone uses a credit card now with the Chamber of Commerce, whether they're paying their annual dues, or purchasing lists from them, or any sort of Chamber-related expense, they now use Schools Spare Pays as their credit card processing company. And Schools Spare Pays is unique in that when they get down and drill down to the fees that they charge, they give 25% of what they earn in revenue right back to the local education foundation. So now, anytime anyone in Citrus County pays with a credit card through our local chamber, we, as an education foundation, receive a portion of that credit card processing fee, which we then in turn give back to Citrus County schools. So, I would like Ms. Bayes to come forward. I believe I saw her come in. Ms. Himmel? We would like to recognize the Citrus County Chamber of Commerce as an A-plus partner. We provided a plaque here that says, "The Citrus County Education Foundation would like to cordially thank Citrus County Chamber of Commerce. We greatly appreciate your generous support of the Schools Spare Pays fundraising program." So, thank you very much.
The Citrus County Chamber is honored to receive this plaque, and as you know, we're friends of our school and our children. So, I think our school system is the best in the state, and we turn out a great product. And just to tell you how committed we are to our kids, I think that we have about 70 kids throughout our county that's going to join the chamber for legislative days next week in Tallahassee. And to go back to what Ms. Howard was saying, the kids, we've arranged so that they'll be able to make a presentation to the Secretary of Transportation box old regarding the sidewalks and the trail, and then we also have a presentation to the Deputy Secretary of DEP on Safe Crystal or Save the Keys Bay. So, we've got a great project lined up for our school kids to really spotlight them in Tallahassee, and we're very proud of them. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bayes. And so, now that that program's up and running, it's available to any local businesses, and really, any large-scale businesses that operate more than one county, they can designate to the local education foundation wherever, whichever county they operate in. So, it's a tremendous program that will provide a recurring revenue for our foundation. One of the things we, in the past, hadn't really identified in ongoing monthly revenue. So, this is a great opportunity. It's at no cost to our foundation to run. It's simply an influx of revenue for businesses, and it costs them absolutely nothing. They match the rates directly, and so it's already a cost of running the business, and now you're just giving back a little bit of every time you have to run those credit cards. So, we are really appreciative of the chamber for stepping up and being our first partner in that, and hopefully, it'll still lead to a much larger annual revenue stream. Getting beyond that, I just wanted to update you a little bit on some of the financial expenditures we've had since October, when I was here last. The Teacher of the Year and Support Related Employee of the Year, the amount cost $17,064. A little bit higher this year because we took on the trophies, the purchasing of the trophies in the past, that had been something paid for by the district. They outkaged us this year, and that was something we stepped up and paid for as well. We've also funded the River Project. They initially had been not funded when we had not enough money in the bank. They recently came back, aren't in need of the money for ongoing middle school expansion of their programs for the last semester of this year. So, we have funded the River Project. Also, WEEB web training. We helped send Lisa Stanton, a local middle school teacher, to New York to get that much-needed training, so that now she's going to come back and be an instructor for the other two middle schools, so that we can continue this web program at all the middle schools locally. The Festival of Arts tents was once again funded this year, and then the Foundation for Successful Teacher mini-grants. We've added an additional mini-grant to Citrus Springs Middle School. We got some more matching dollars from the state of Florida, and that has now brought us up to over $65,000 for just this school year alone. The revenues that we have come in, the coupons for classrooms program, it ended, these are our final numbers, 41,962 stayed directly in the schools that sold the books. $38,000 and some change came to the education foundation, which we'll now use on our district-wide expenditures. We also had a charitable trust come in around August, September of last year, for $114,000. And then, the payroll campaign, again, we're very appreciative to be a part of that. We have 4% increase in the dollars pledged this year through payroll deduction and a 10% increase in overall number of employees. So, even more we're giving back, and that really is a great feeling for the education foundations, to know that the local employees that they support also support them and what we do with our mission. As you know, this is our fundraising season coming up in April. April is our Educational Fitness Month, so we have two major events going on. It's our second annual Schoolhouse Hustle on April 11th. The race will be a little bit later this year, so the races will actually start at 8:00 AM instead of 7:30 this year, so you can sleep in an extra few minutes. But last year was a wonderful turnout. We had over 500 registered runners, the largest race in the county last year, in our first year. So, we're hoping to keep growing that. Suncoast is back as our title sponsor once again this year, and we would love to see you all out there. Ms. Himmel has agreed to be a part of the one-mile walk, and we would love for all of you to be there doing it as well. And then, the week following that is our 17th Annual Superintendent's Golf Classic. Again, this is an annual event that we put on to try to bring together all the schools, all of the administrators and community leaders to have a great fun day and raise some funds for local public education. So, those, if you want to play, those are quickly filling up. I've been in it eight years now, we've sold out every year I've played. So, if you want to get a course in, then be sure to get in touch with myself, or Bruce Sheffield, or Bernard Salmonge. They do an amazing job coordinating all of the event and making sure we have enough sponsors and we have the golf course. It'll be at Sugar Mill Woods again this year. There were some procedural items as well, and I've spoken and met with people in the district regarding this. There is now, we've now completed our strategic plan. We have a three-year strategic plan in place. We'll be adopting that at the upcoming May meeting that spells out our goals and our long-term plan for expanding revenues and expanding programs for you all. We also have implemented a funding policy, so now there's a very easy-to-use funding application that if the board, or the teacher, or whoever is looking to be funded by the education foundation can fill out that application and get it to us. We have procedures in place for responding timely, making sure we're following up with the funding request, and if nothing falls through the cracks, and we can get all the information that's needed and able to make a great decision. One thing we've added to help with the district, and at the request of Superintendent Himmel, is that any funding request has to be signed off by a district administrator, district level. So that way, they're, and you all in turn, are aware of any funding requests that come through us, and that we're not having people request from us while there's maybe not even Title I funds or somewhere else. And that way, we're streamlining the process so that there's no overlap or unnecessary expenditures on our side or your side. So, it's a new policy. So far, it's gone very well, and everything that's coming through, it has really clarified, made it very transparent on what's being asked for, where the money will be used, and what's the expectation of when the money's given. So, thank you all for having me again. Any questions? Or...
Just praise the web and all of them. Thank you for all of them. But that web, I know that that teacher, we had that need. Funding was a challenge. They made that request. I went through some of that process, and Stephen, thank you again, because nearly every fifth, sixth grader, incoming sixth grader will get affected in a positive way because of that investment. So, again, that's just another way where you all were able to respond to the need we have, and appreciate that. So, thank you.
I appreciate you coming to tell us all this. It's good to know what's coming, you know, what you're looking at. It's a great order that I'm in. It's happening. We really appreciate that.
No problem. I know it's budget season coming up too, so if you have any financial questions as well, please let me know, because, you know, we, with getting that trust in, without the trust, we would still be operating at a loss this year. Even with the coupons for classrooms, we're giving back at an exponentially higher level than we were in years past, the last three years now. If projected trends continue, we'll still operate at a loss this year, meaning that we'll give more back to the school system than we'll actually take in revenue if you pull that trust out of the factory. But with the trust, it has helped make our balance a little more healthy. Total, as of the end of January, so as of the February 1, 2015 totals, there was 212,173 in unrestricted budget and unrestricted balance. That's before River Project had been paid, and a few others had been paid. But much more healthy than the $82,000 when I was here last year in May. So, moving in the right direction. And of the 212 on February 1st, about 20, a little over $18,000 was restricted. So, those are specifics for scholarships or certain programs that have been set aside. So, that's not part of our discretionary budget. But again, a little over $200,000 still. So, healthier funds and moving in the right direction. And, you know, we've made a concerted effort to spend down the reserves. Obviously, three years ago, it would have been well over $300,000 in total balance. We got it down to $82,000. Now, we've bounced back up a little bit. But the key for us is if there's a necessary, you know, if there's a need, we want to make sure the money's not sitting in our account, it's getting to where it needs to be. That's what we're focused on.
Thanks for your creativity and commitment. I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Mr. Duffin?
Yes, so the charitable trust that came in, is that something that occurs on an annual basis? Do you see where, is that the first time you've had something?
I've been with the foundation now for about three years. My wife's been with it for eight years, and that was the first one we've seen. There wasn't a whole lot of information with it either. It was a local couple who had just decided they want to give to local education, and it's absolutely tremendous. We weren't expecting the gift. It took a little while to get it out of the hands of the state, because it actually came to us in the end of 2013, so it was a while before they actually dispersed it to us. I had to go a little lawyer on them, but... I had to go a little lawyer on them, but we got it.
You guys happen to know?
Scratch on as I go. Well, you asked to talk to their compliance or legal department, and they go, "Oh, we're sending the check this week." But that's, it's just tremendous when people like that in the community just step up and they make a gift like that. And we've talked to the Chronicle, and they're trying to track down a little more information on the family and see if there's a piece they can do on that type of gifting. But, you know, we've, for us, whether it's, you know, $20 or $115,000, we've accepted graciously and try to use it as best as we can. And we hope that more people in the future see us as a conduit for giving to the whole district. You know, a lot of, on the collegiate level, a lot of people give to their college or that kind of thing, and for them, it's kind of a drop in the bucket. But $10,000 or $115,000 goes a long way in local education and supporting local teachers. So we hope more people think of that when they're doing their state planning or their prudent fiscal planning, that the Citrus County Education Foundation or your local education foundation is a source for that.
Ms. Prun.
See, I have a question. Are the Visa or the MasterCard can be one you already have? If you spend it with a Chamber?
Yeah, this isn't, yeah, this isn't you have to sign up for a credit card or anything. This is the businesses' credit card processing, so.
So if I use my Visa?
At the Chamber. If you pay the Chamber for something, they'll get charged. You go to a gas station.
I need to pay them. I'm just going to write them a check. I'm not going to do that now.
Use your credit card. It'll come back. So it's, they're the end user on the credit card processing side. They use the largest clearinghouse in the world, who also clears for Walmart and other big companies. So it's a well-trusted company, and then they're the end kind of result after the banking institutions. And they've, I can talk to you a little more in detail if you'd like to get into it, but they came out of the gentleman, David McKay, who runs the program. His, he had some family members die on 11th who were in the school system. He wanted to come up with a way to give back to local education in their honor. He did a golf tournament for a few years, and people stopped attending. He said, "What can I do?" And his knowledge of the credit card processing and how that worked, he thought of this idea to, so they only do local education, and that's their sole mission, is to help give back a little bit. Well, I'm sure they make a decent amount of change themselves, but, you know, it's really a no-brainer for businesses, because you're already, they're matching your rates. So you're already paying that as a business cost anyways. It's just now, some of what you're paying them comes right back to the charity.
He will be the one that markets that. The foundation will be out marketing?
No, I don't sit in meetings and talk, act like I know about credit card processing and all. I can't.
He's going to be out there trying to get other businesses.
We have a local rep, yeah, Diana Vetter, who comes and meets with businesses individually. David's the head of the company. He's up in Texas, but he comes down from time to time and meets with folks as well. So, yeah, they're here to help out. David actually has ties to this area through the, I'm blanking on his name. I'm sorry, I forgot the name. But he, his sister lives in Citrus County, so they're very passionate about bringing this program here and trying to get it off the ground.
Thank you.
Stephen, thank you very much. We have a 5:30, so, and we appreciate this. This was very informative.
My door is always open. Let me know if you need anything.
I'm going to recess our regular board meeting, and I am going to open our public hearing at 5:30. This public hearing is to provide an opportunity for public comment and discussion on recommended materials for the 2015-2016 instructional materials adoption. And I believe Dr. Geddes is going to come forward and talk to us first about the process, and then we will go ahead and open a public comment. Dr. Geddes, good afternoon.
Good afternoon. My name is Mike Geddes. I'm the Director of Instructional Technology, as well as the Instructional Materials Administrator for the Citrus County School District. So I wanted to just take a couple minutes, and that is all I was told to take by our leader, Ms. Himmel, to refresh us on the process. And so if you recall, and this is in your information, I believe, but this year, we looked at four topics, subjects, K-5 music, 9 through 12 health and physical education, 9 through 12 oral languages, 6 through 12 career technical education, agriculture. I will remind you that that schedule of adoption is determined by the state of Florida. So they publish a schedule, and we follow their schedule of what subject to adopt and look at for what particular year. Our committees have been meeting since August of this most recent year. Typically, for each of those subjects, we've had three meetings. The committees consist of stakeholders, experienced teachers, subject matter experts, community and parent representation on each committee. We've been doing that for really quite a number of years. We look at our current reality. We discuss procedures. We develop a rubric, a measuring tool by which to evaluate materials that we're considering. We screen the available materials from publishers. Then we actually have publisher presentations, have publishers come in and present on their instructional material. We evaluate it against that rubric, and then the committee comes to consensus. And based on that consensus, they bring a recommendation to our school board. Now, I would just tell you that there was some new legislation that came about in 1314 that became law on July 1, 2014, and that was based on Senate Bill 864. You probably remember that bill. But it has three or four requirements. I have all of those, I have the law right here in my hand. I won't bore you with the details unless you want me to. But basically, it really, the intent was to make the process even more transparent than it may have been already. And so what we need to do, and what we've complied with to this point this year, is we've put our information on the Internet, the materials that we're recommending for adoption. We put those on the Internet. We've advertised it on our website. And I'm not going to go there unless you want me to, but basically, from our website, our district homepage, you can go to the Instructional Materials Adoption page, and it provides a list of the materials that are being recommended, as well as a web address and a username and password, so any member of the public or parent or community can actually log in and look at that student edition of those materials firsthand themselves. So we, by law, and which we have complied with, did that 20 days prior to the next event, which is a public hearing, to capture public comment or input on the materials that we're recommending. So I don't know if we have any today, but if you, this is the opportunity, this meeting was scheduled specifically for the purpose of gathering or just listening to the public input. You don't necessarily have to respond to it, but like any public input opportunity, certainly you'll listen. And then, according to law now, you have a separate meeting, different from the advertised, noticed public hearing, which is today, to approve those materials. And that meeting is scheduled for April 14 on your board agenda. So that's the kind of, the new twist, the new things we're complying with this year, and I think glad to do it, but have the web material that you're proposing out on the web for public access. Have a public hearing that's been noticed to talk about those materials, or at least get input. And then finally, have a scheduled meeting separate from the public hearing, which will be next meeting to ask your approval. So please understand, we're not asking you to approve anything today. This is just the forum to gather input. Any questions about the process?
No, you can be clear. Thanks for all your time.
Thank you, Dr. Geddes. With that, we do have one request for public input at this time. I'm going to just read our chairman's statement of concerns when it comes concerning public speakers, and this is what we do, especially if we have new speakers or in a public input. So each listed speaker will have and allowed three minutes to make a presentation. Speakers are asked to address the issue at hand and refrain from using obscenities, vulgarities, and other breaches of respect. And refrain, I'm sorry, and refrain from words or statements which from their usual construction and common acceptance are construed as insults and tend to incite violence or breach of peace. We ask that you model the following character traits: cooperation, responsibility, citizenship, kindness, respect, honesty, self-control, and tolerance. The school board will not discuss or take official action on any presentation. Only persons presenting who wish to speak, I'm sorry, any person presenting who wish to speaks must fill out a green card, which are located in the back of the room. And I would like to call our first speaker, Ms. Kathleen O'Donnell.
O'Donnell.
O'Donnell, I am sorry. I'm sorry, Ms. Kathleen.
Okay. I do mean timeless. It's short.
Okay.
First off, my name's Kathy O'Donnell, and I'm with C-FIT Citizens for Informed Teenagers, and we're here regarding the book, the textbook, the Glencoe, Florida Glencoe Health Book, Without Sexuality. And I, we have, let me just say that before we came here, we have spoke with the Minister of Administration, we have spoke with Ms. Himmel, we have spoke with teachers, nurses, the Public Health Department, teachers, students, and grandmothers, okay, to, before I came. So let me just read this, because I look like that young man who ran the RISD. Citizens for Informed Teens Promote Sexual Health Education That Includes Medical Accurate and Comprehensive. That is why the group name stresses the word informed. Obviously, we agree that abstinence is best. Florida law says this, says the schools have to teach abstinence, but it does not say that you cannot teach informative for pregnant in prevention. According to the Florida Statistics chart, over 40 babies are born to teenage mothers each year in Citrus County. Statistics and research show that generally, both mother and child will forever live in poverty. High school has traditionally been the place where teens learn more of the basics on all subjects. The textbooks and your lecture series does cover many aspects of teen development very well. There is no place in the health text lectures curriculum accordingly that teaches a full understanding of how to protect themselves against getting pregnant and sexually transmitted diseases. In the book, there's one, in the text, there's one word mentioned, and they mentioned condom, but it's not in the index, nor is birth control or contraceptive or other preventions. Purchasing a health book without sexuality is like not allowing discussions of statin in heart disease, blocking information, as it was for many years, of the dangers of smoking, not promoting prevention tests for cancer or allergies, just for teaching, or even not even teaching the different ways that sugar affects the digestive system and obesity. Teenage today, more than the air, more than my air, really need to know how and be encouraged, not discouraged, to protect themselves. Abstinence works, but in the heat of passion or just the decision that sex is okay, our students need to know about the types of birth control and the need for being tested, and where to receive affordable health services. Accurate knowledge is an insurance policy, as adults, we know this. Accordingly, the CDC and other research has shown that just teaching abstinence does not work. Teenage pregnancy has traditionally gone down when full prevention is taught. So why do you, who are in charge of informing our students, not teaching, and not even providing a book with the birth control information? C-FIT would like to see the textbook not be adopted and the school system buy the book with those eight chapters of sexuality in it. My talk is about purchasing a fully informative textbook, but C-FIT would also like the curriculum to include a full range of prevention, pregnancy, which it doesn't have now. We've reviewed all the materials, both with the River Project materials, we've reviewed both books, and we've talked a lot, so it's, we, that's what, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kathleen. No, thank you. You read that quite well in the first front. Thank you, Ms. Kathleen.
I do have a question, though.
You know what? Go right back up here, if you would, real quick.
Mr. Geddes, I did the full text of the student edition on your website.
Speaking to the mic.
Yeah, we can't hear you. We're sorry.
The full text of the book that you have on the website. I, and I tried, I didn't try this week, so I don't know if it's this week, did not have the full text of the book. It had all the information about what was taught, the quizzes and all that kind of stuff, but it didn't have the full text of the book, so. And I meant, I called you about it. You said we'd see it, and I must admit, I haven't checked this week. Okay? Now, if we want, can we send a letter to, who do we send a letter to before the adoption? Do we have that right?
In terms of your interest?
Ms. Kathleen, you know what we'll do is I'm going to let you and Dr. Geddes talk about that on the side, and if need be, he can get with Mr. Clodder on that. So thank you, Ms. Kathleen. Is there anyone here else looking to speak before the textbook adoption of instructional Is there anyone else here to speak for the 2015-2016 instructional materials adoption? Last call. I want to thank you for the input today. What we will do is go ahead and close the public hearing for the public comment and discussion on the recommendation, the recommended materials for the 2015-2016 instructional materials adoption. And then I'm going to go ahead and reopen our regular meeting, and we are actually going to go to the 5:45, and I'm just going to see if I have any cards, since it's just about 5:45. And Ms. Victoria Smith, I need to get used to saying that right now, because it is there. Ms. Smith is here to talk to us, and Ms. Smith, thank you for coming.
Thank you. Victoria Smith, Citrus County Education Association President. Good evening. Actually, I was hoping to finish seeing hers, because it's actually based on professional learning development. Right now, with all the mandates that's happening from the state given to us, and we're having to do all these testings, we're also during our planning periods, having, you know, all the meetings that we have to have to prepare for the testing. We have to be trained, even though we keep seeing the same thing, of course, but the new one, it's different. But with that, we understand that the state requires professional development, so therefore we have the half-days. But we're also having professional development during our planning period. And so it's because of all the different things that we're doing, I am pleased that this is happening, that this, I'm starting to read here, that hopefully, we're going to have it to where it's geared more to helping the teachers, because some of the professional development that has been happening is just a checkoff list. I did the professional development, but it really did not pertain to the teachers. And right now, with all the testing and with all the new standards that we're having to do, it would be better for everyone if we really worked on that, rather than just checkoff. I did a professional development on something that doesn't even pertain to, like me, mathematics. So that's what I'm hoping for. That's what I just wanted to bring the message to, because I am hearing that from some of our members, that they are feeling overwhelmed. And it's not because of the schools, it's because of the state. It's just now, we're going to have professional development, please make it, you know, relevant rather than checkoff. So thank you for this, because I think this will be something that I'll share.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. But go ahead.
And I agree with what Vicki's saying. However, some of the checkoffs are things that were mandated, and they know that, from the state, and rather than us bringing teachers together for staff meeting, some of these professional developments are checkoff, because they've got to check off their dumbness, because the state mandates for what they're doing. So we are in total agreement. I hear from the new teachers that they're really overwhelmed, because they also have a TIP program, and we don't have an easy fix. So, but we are aware of it. So thank you for bringing that up. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay, we're going to jump back to our 5:30. No, I'm sorry, Ms. Lindy. I still have actually my five o'clock, I'm sorry, presentation of the Academy of Environmental Science. So I'm sorry, Ms. Lindy. Mr. Stoffcheck, it is a pleasure to see you this afternoon, sir.
Good afternoon, everyone. Pleasure to be here. I'd like to start off by introducing the chairman of our academy's board of directors. So please welcome Mrs. Betty Vanzen.
Hello. Hello, everybody tonight. Nice to see you all.
Ms. Betty, would you just do this and wave at Dr. Geddes? No, 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 with the other hand, with that phone?
He's showing off your iPhone.
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate that.
Your big iPhone.
And they're almost free. Almost.
That was just a fun thing I was doing.
I don't know if you can do it this way. I want you to see my nail polish.
That's nice, too.
Oh, thank you. Well, it's very nice to be here. I thought Mr. Stoffcheck was going to say a little bit more, and I could prepare and I could prepare about something that I wanted to talk about, but here I am. I'd like to introduce Ms. Dee Atkins, she's a board member. I'm sorry, I moved away from the mic. She's one of our board members, and in fact, is the only board member who's here tonight. We happen to have quite a bit of sickness on our school board, and I'm hoping that we will have a quorum for tomorrow's meeting. Actually, if they're sick, I'm glad they don't come, but we need people to come for a quorum. So even Mr. Hurst is not here tonight, and I'd like to apologize for that. I'd like to thank you all and all of the Citrus County School System for the support that we get at the Academy of Environmental Science. I cannot think of a single time when we've asked somebody for guidance or for help, when we did not receive that. One of the issues that we have, a small issue that we have, is purchase orders. And I'm not sure why we have that issue. I, I fully intend to investigate that and see what's going on with that. We are financially very solvent, thank goodness, because we're looking at a great deal, a great deal, of repair on our building. As you all know, we lease our building from the city of, of Crystal River, but in our lease agreement, we agree to take care of the maintenance of the building. And the building is very old. It was originally condominiums, it was built as condominiums, and it has been made, thank, good, thank you, Citrus County School System, for making that into a very, very functional school. But it's old. And being on the water with the salt in the air and with a hundred and twenty kids in the building, it is deteriorating rapidly. We have on our board Brian Tambasco. Brian is a contractor, he is a principal in advanced aluminum, and he is chairman of our building committee. He has ready for this, hopefully tomorrow at the school board meeting. He has engineering drawings and work that has, is critical to be done. Uh, he has spoken with the city of Crystal River, they know what we have to do with their building, but I'm gonna tell you, it's not cheap. We have major, major construction issues with that building. But it's our building. So even though we lease it, it's our building, and it's our job to fix it. So we will have engineering drawings, we will get three bids for any work that has to be done. We will review the bids at the board level, approve the, the bid, and then cut purchase orders or cut requests and send them in for money from our account in your finance department. So please, if you hear something about that, it's very serious, and, and I hope that if there's anything that you can do in the board level, that you will help us expedite this, so we can get it done through the summer. Okay? Is there any, do you have any questions for me? I actually have our financials, but I don't think you care. Sam wouldn't let me discuss it anyway, because.
Sam Hurst.
Sam Hurst, because I'm kind of fuzzy math. Yeah, and he's very, very, very good, so. Any questions?
Board members, do you have any questions?
Thank you very much for bringing it to our attention.
No questions. Well, wow, thank you so much, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I'll turn it back over.
Mr. Stoffcheck.
I hope all of you received the report, I said, everybody get a copy of it. Any questions on that report? My math teacher told me under new courses we offered this year, I inadvertently forgot, we are teaching Algebra II. He made sure I wasn't letting. Matter of fact, uh, we purchased the newly adopted Common Core textbook for Algebra I, Algebra II. We purchased the Common Core English Language Arts Program for the English classes, and our, my board approved. We now have a classroom set of iPads in the English department that the students are using, and the feedback from them, the students love them, and said that they're a great educational tool. Couple of dates I want to share with you, you know, every year we have our annual open house. This year, it's coming up soon, March 19th. This is when we get along, and you're all welcome, we love seeing out there. And something that just came in today, we've been working with the U.S. Coast Guard. If you read in my report, they're teaching that boating class in all the kids. They're gonna bring a 29-foot rescue boat out on March 21st at the dock, and their educational trailer, and it's gonna be open to the public if you want to see what the U.S. Coast Guard does. Uh, it will be from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m.
What day is that now?
Saturday, March 21st.
9:01.
9:01.
And the thing on the 19th, what time is that?
That's from 4:30 till 7:30. We usually don't get out there, we usually get a couple on there. Ms. Belfer notes, you've been there. We usually have to put the lights on before we leave to take the last tour through. And, uh, I'd just like to say, uh, a big thank you, all the way from the administration, all the departments and aid services, research accountability, human resources, transportation, purchasing, food service, maintenance, warehouse, Dr. Geddes and his wonderful crew at TRC who come get along without him, especially with computer testing. And last but not least, all members of the school board for all the support. We could not operate as effective or efficiently without the support from all the departments in Citrus County Schools, so a big thank you.
Board members, do you have any questions?
I have a question. When is the lease up with City of Crystal River?
What is?
The, when, the, when is the lease expired?
Do you know when that's off?
2017.
The 2017?
No, actually, we have, we have one year, and now we've got four more years to make it a five-year lease.
Right.
So we have, we have now four more, three more years.
She would know more. We got the lease with the city across the river, and then we also have to deal with Florida Community Trust, because.
They give them the money.
That's the money that was handed over to the city of Crystal River to manage it, really, but we lease it from them.
Any other questions, board members? Ms. Stoffcheck, I just want to also thank you, and, um, we had a report last board meeting, um, during our workshop regarding, um, the kind of, you know, an understanding of how the academy is working with our sister, the homeschools for each of the, um, high schools. And, uh, we appreciated that dialogue and that positive conversation back and forth.
We've opened up that dialogue. Matter of fact, about a week ago, we sent, uh, students to Crystal River High, all the students, and to Citrus High, and they got a little orientation at the high school, got to meet with the guidance counselors. LaCanto is coming to, uh, next week at the academy to meet with all their students.
That's great.
So we're opening up the communication, opening up schedules, and letting each other go in and see who's taking Florida Virtual classes. So if a student signs up, is, so I have some students that are at the academy now, but they signed up for Florida Virtual back in December after May school, and I could not go and see the progress. So we, we worked out a lot of the communication issues that we were having.
So all three high schools will be sending out guidance counselor?
No. Crystal River and Citrus, we got a bus, and we let them go one afternoon to the high school. The, inadvertently, the LaCanto bus was canceled instead of changing its time. We requested time change, and they put in canceled. So, uh, LaCanto's coming out to the high school. So, and, uh, we work with the high schools any way we can. Our goal is to have every student, whether with us or in the high school, to walk across that stage and get that diploma. We're about students, and that's what we'll say. Okay?
Thank you, Ben.
Well, thank you very much, we appreciate it.
Have a great afternoon.
You, too.
Okay, Ms. Lindy, you're up.
Again. Still, this is. Now she's ready. Now I'm ready, because this is what I was supposed to come for. Professional development today, what we've been doing since July, and I will be able to address some of the things that Ms. Smith brought up as well. So, from July 1st to February 24th, when we ran the report, we have had this many incidences of professional development. So 466 administrators, and when we say that, it can be multiple, but there has been that many attending professional development. 10,830 instructional personnel have been marked attended for participating in professional learning of some type during this school year. 1,103 support personnel have also participated in professional development of some type, and 200 volunteers. We started, uh, had that presentation there in the middle to share with you our volunteers that are continuing to come in, to be trained, to, to assist our schools. So for big rocks or big things that we focused on this year, there's been a lot with Florida standards. We've had English Language Arts world and the mathematics world, but a big focus in the English Language Arts. This year, the FSA writing features have had to be a big focus. The writing has changed. So a lot of professional learning has been going on, looking at the writing features connected to FSA. Evidence-based writing, breaking down the rubric, doing some rubric training, doing some calibration training in all of our schools, where we sit down and say, okay, there's a brand-new rubric based on what we can tell, let's see how our students are, and how do we adjust instruction from there. We did in the fall, offer some writing in the content areas for our secondary social studies and science teachers to also continue to build, not how to, not for them to focus on teaching, writing, but how to use writing evidence-based based on their content area, and how they can do that in, in within their classrooms.
We can leave that rubric, because that was basically something that we had to invent as a district. And, and how is that, are you finding that that creation, that tool, is effective?
Well, what we did is we used the rubric model that was given to us by the state. So the Department of Education released the rubric that would be used to measure our students' writing progress this year, and we built it off of that. And, you know, we're not gonna know, you know, how all this plays out.
It's all with you at heart.
Absolutely, across, this has been a K-12 initiative, too. We've been working across the board on the FSA writing features, including the rubric, the training, calibration, what is evidence-based writing? Looks like, look like, how do you present a writing task, which is very different than a formula type of writing that was present in FGA days. Okay? So that has been a huge focus of professional development all year. And even for the content area, teachers of science and social studies at the high school level, we begin in August, we have them go back, go ahead, go to their classrooms, based on one of their standards, assign a writing assignment, come back in September, share that writing assignment with each other, and how they graded it. Some of them use rubrics, some of them you didn't. So we really had a focus of conversation on that, to support that.
Let me ask you a question, I've noticed you're talking in speeches with some of the students, it's a totally different kind of speech than we used to hear. It wasn't like, you know, step one, two, three, four, like that. Does that have something to do with the rubric and writing that's being done?
I don't know the answer to that. I would say that it can be, in that the, the writing shift that has been made is exciting, because it's being allowed to be in a different form. Bottom line, we need to have coherent, you know, and organized form of writing, but it doesn't have to follow a formula.
And the speeches were like that, and I thought there was something different happening.
Absolutely, absolutely. And, and you did hear in the speeches, evidence. Some of them shared that evidence of based on fact, based on information, and that's a lot of what the style of writing is requiring.
That little girl that spoke first was honorable mention. She was awesome. She was as good as anybody else.
Absolutely.
I'm glad she made it, honorable mention.
Uh, just so you know, I was the one that judged her at the school level. And by the way, that was what impressed me, was it was a unique, different style, so I have to say that. I'm glad you all recognized that, because when I heard it, I was like, wow, that's, that was great, so. Just more exceptional stuff happening with our students. No, no, it just was, I'm glad you all pointed that out, because I saw it and I thought, wow, that was just so different than what has been done, so.
Christine, no, that, okay. We'll do that. In the mathematics, Algebra II, we had, you know, and did something else new on the horizon this year with Algebra II facing an end-of-course assessment that they, end-of-course test that they haven't had. So the Algebra II team had to be pulled in and say, okay, based on what we're being told about the test spec, specifications and the standards for Algebra II, how can we create a scope and sequence or a curriculum map connected to making sure our students are ready when it comes time for their testing? So that team had to be pulled together to work on that. At the middle school level, we had adopted a new math curriculum for middle school that this year is being implemented. So we've had to provide some training and support to support that adoption. We had a beyond-the-basics training, you know, at the beginning, when you first get a new series, you're spending time, okay, what's in this book, how do I, how, how can I use the resources? How do they match with the standards I'm trying to teach? But then in October, we brought to them, okay, now beyond the basics. Now, you've worked with the book for about nine weeks. Here are some technology resources, here are some other pieces, here are some assessment components that can help you in implementation of your curriculum. So it's been working through. FCR STEM Learn, last summer, we had several districts in our, so, seven teachers from our district go to a two-week training in Tallahassee, and, and it was based on enhancing content skills of educators. It was a random draw, you had to, it was a true random research project, submit your name, and so many would be selected. But we had several, um, teachers from our district from the elementary world and in the secondary world get to participate in the mathematics portion of the FCR STEM. And those participants have been sharing that information that they learned back at their school site, in different grade-level teams, and then also focus on the mathematical practices. So, connected still to that, has been the, how we help the teachers be aware of the resources available to support their instruction. You know, we, we've gone through lots of practice, um, professional development over the last few years on teaching strategies, but with the new Florida standards, um, we've had to, we've really spent some time this year on helping teachers be familiar with resources that are available to provide standards-based instruction, C-POMs. C-POMs has been presented, um, we've had representative from the state that's come in to share that, we've had different sharing sessions at all the schools involving the C-POMs resources that are available. This year, a big portion has also been focused on the FSA portal that was provided to us by the Department of Education. Those, the FSA portal included the sample test, but also resources that can help educators in becoming familiar with what, what, how the students will be tested. So the test item specifications and the type of question stems that could be, sample questions were very valuable in taking our teachers through to get them to understand, okay, here's the items, here's how they can be tested, here are the standards. So that was something that we shared as a, a, something to support instruction, and then also the different curriculum materials that are available. So that's been a big umbrella of Florida standards professional development. But there's been other things that have kind of risen to the top and focused throughout our district this year, collaboration. Collaboration has been big, in that we've had to give teams opportunities to say, okay, how do we do this? How are we gonna navigate this unsure, unsure year? And they've spent time planning together, looking at the standards, looking at the, um, resources for C-POMs. A lot of that collaboration for the writing, I mean, to, to take place. So that's been a common, it's not necessarily something to focus on, but it's been a common thing to support our professional learning throughout the districts, providing time for collaboration.
Is collaboration, uh, like sixth, seventh, eighth grade collaborative, or is it from eighth or twelfth?
We've had it both. We've had, um, we've had more, we've had both within grade levels and then vertical, because especially in the ELA world, you can see the spiral of how each standard builds upon each other to the next grade level. In one professional development session that I actually assisted in facilitating, we had K-5 in the room, looking at the same standard, and to say, okay, this is how this item is gonna be assessed in third, fourth, and fifth grade. Wow, what does that standard look like in K-1 and 2? And the teachers had some fantastic suggestions of, okay, I can easily ask my students about the tone of a passage in kindergarten, so that they can start understanding the language, the mood, the tone, those type of things. That those are extra questions they could be asking during oral reads with their students. So there was a lot of vertical discussion, too, of how do we support each other in that way? So, um, another thing is, we have focused on, with the new legislation requirement of students with disability training, um, that is a new legislative requirement, 20 hours of, um, professional learning dedicated to students with disabilities is required for all educative renewals. One of the focuses a lot of our schools have participated in. One of the focuses a lot of our schools have participated in is children and trauma. Learning about children and trauma and how that impacts their learning, having trauma sensitive classrooms. We've done a lot of this training with Teri Cooper from SEDNET. And I have my card to tell you what SEDNET means. SEDNET is a multi-agency network for students with emotional and behavioral disabilities. A lot of our schools have found that they've been very fortunate to have Ms. Cooper come in, provide some professional development for their staff. If nothing else, a way, raising awareness of how the characteristics of children and trauma and how they respond to stress, how they respond to some things that may be so little that you have no idea what made them explode based on it, but could be based on the traumatic experience that has occurred in their life. So that has been very beneficial. She also has been supportive in a book study that's happened in a lot of our schools that is dealing with the boy who was raised as a dog. That's the title of the book, The Boy Who Was Raised As A Dog. And she's sponsored the WikiSpace where educators and support staff and teachers have been reading the book, responding weekly to thought-provoking questions connected to the topics that are presented in that book. So that's been going on. With the overwhelming stress that has been throughout the district, there has also been a need at many of our schools to refocus on relationships, relationships that we have with students, and then also team building within our staff. So some of our professional development days, the half-days, and other experiences have been very much supportive of, okay, some of them have looked at the relationships that we have with our at-risk students, putting pictures of a student saying, which student that's on this wall that's at risk of failure either because of grades or tests or past lagging data? Who do you have a relationship with? What do you know about these students? What can we do to be more supportive? And staff members talking about, oh, I have a relationship with this child. A teacher saying, I can't get him to do anything in my classroom. How can you, what do you do? Letting those have, have those conversations to discuss how you establish those relationships. And then there was a realization that some of those kids didn't have anyone who had a relationship with them. So there has been an overt effort by staff members to say, okay, I'll take this one on. This one's in my class. I'll, I'll start to learn this student and get, and develop and give some support. And then also those relationship buildings for staff members and team building that's been going on. And then along with all of that has been with our one-to-one initiative, technology integration. You know, we have the iPads now at multiple grade levels, and they are wonderful instructional tools as long as they're being used. So we need to be modeling and providing support to those classrooms, and that's where we continue to go, and it's being, it's playing a big role in engagement and also the success of our students. So those are, those would be the big rocks of professional development that have been occurring this year in both half-days and then some of our designated full-days, as well as the learning, professional learning communities that are going on in our schools at other times. Now, with that, I do fully acknowledge that most recently, our most February 16th Professional Development Day, that day in our secondary level and in many places, it had to be dedicated to how to deliver and proctor, and it was the compliance of test administration. You know, we've had, we had to spend, you know, some good quality PE time on focusing on those requirements that come to us from the state. Here are some other professional development topics. Again, I mentioned some of the students with disabilities. We've been offering lots of different trainings to help support that requirement. There have been different professional learning communities. We continue our support of reading, ESO, and gifted endorsement. Different book studies, Universal Design for Learning has been huge. Our potential leadership program, we had a group finish that. I want to point out EdCamp Citrus. The date is already set. Mark your calendars for September 19th, 2015 at Citrus High School. The next one is scheduled. We have several online self-paced resources that are available to our teachers as well. Custom Guide, we were able to renew that subscription. Has to do a lot with the Office products. PD360, multiple topics for teachers to go in and learn a little bit about whatever they need to. They also have in PD360, the Common Core Standards with extended classroom segments that are connected to standards, which a teacher can go and say, okay, I want to see what the standard would look like in instruction. You can look up the standard and play the video based on that. Simple K-12 is a new professional development resource that rolled out in January. It is mostly technology-based, and it provides educators with thirty-minute segments to help them with multiple topics. It can include, so you want to have a flipped classroom. It's a teacher, thirty minutes saying, okay, if you want to do a flipped lesson, here's how you can set it up, this is how you do it, here's, you know, the 101 on how to do something like that.
Thirty minutes, that's so good.
Perfect. It's just enough. It's just enough. Differentiated instruction with a one computer classroom. Differentiated instruction with iPads. There are multiple topics that a teacher can go in at any point and watch these thirty-minute segments to get a better sense of what, what are we even talking about when we talk about this tool? So another thing that we've just recently rolled out is a Safe Schools component that's available to support staff and, and to instructional staff that's sponsored by Fizbit. Fizbit is paying for this resource this year for us. If we can start showing usage, we're hoping it will continue to be supported, but it too has multiple topics that span to our custodial, food service, and, and instructional work with technology and compliance-type videos. So it's a good, yes, so that's another resource that's available. Okay. And we mentioned the Teacher Induction Program. We've had district training experiences for Teacher Induction Program. Each year, we look at how are we supporting our new hires to the district? If we spend a lot of resources of time and financial resources in hiring our new teachers, we want to help them to be the most impactful that we can and effective, and we want them to stay. So to do that, we have a professional development component, both at the school level and at the district level, to help support them in their needs. As you are well aware of, we do our new teacher orientation in the summer. That first day is kind of a meet and greet, welcome to the district. The second day is content-specific. We pair those teachers up with content supervisors, math, science, social studies. We let them meet and say, okay, here's your curriculum. I'm your resource. I'm here to support you. Then they also go for the third day of to-school orientations. Our district.
What date am I supposed to be there?
It's coming. I'll, I'll get that date for you in just a second. Okay, I'll tell you the date in just a second. Our district-wide trainings, we had a training in October, December, and February with all of our new hires, and we, we focus on common themes and things that would be helpful. One of the pieces that we've been hearing in feedback from teachers in previous years is some of their frustrations deal with not being able to get their parents involved, but a lot of it's connected with not understanding the socioeconomic backgrounds of our students. So we have had each session in October, December, and February, we've brought back training from Ruby Payne, Understanding the Framework of Poverty. Karen Jordan has done an excellent job with kind of helping our new hires to our district recognize those characteristics of students coming from poverty and to support those hidden rules. I've had educators that are new to our district that have been teaching for sixteen, twenty years, new to us, said, have come up personally to say after the session, how valuable the information has been, that if they would have known this, it made sense to them of experiences they've had in their history. They didn't understand they were back from these students into the corner, that they came from different backgrounds and had different rules, and it's been very powerful. We also partner up with CCEA and focus on assessment using data and how that, how we use assessment, formative and summative. And Ms. Smith, sorry, and her team comes in and does a session involved with understanding assessment, and then how we use that data to drive our instruction. So we kind of do a flip-flop. They do a session, and we do another session. One session's going on of that presentation, Ruby Payne, and then we flip-flop that way through the evening and provide that training.
I mentioned something concerning Ruby Payne and the information given there. I think one of the most valuable things that can be done for a new teacher and a person new to the district is to go out with a social worker and have a social worker give them a tour of some of the things that you deal with. You will never, ever see a classroom the same if you do that because it's, it's shocking sometimes what the kids have to deal with.
Absolutely. And one of the visuals we do that we, we began with was had sixty-eight percent of the classroom stand, remain standing, and the rest sat down. And when the participants looked around the room to see what sixty-eight percent looks like and understand that's the amount that our district on average is of free and reduced, it was like, wow, that's a lot more than half of my students. And so it was a really good awareness level to already peep them to say, okay, I probably need to listen, pay attention to this content, absolutely.
I remember going on a home visit with a social worker and traveling to this particular place, and it was in the middle of the winter, and when we arrived, there were burn barrels, and people were standing around with burn barrels getting warm. And, you know, it's like, what? And then the person I'm going to visit, the house I'm going to visit is just right there. So this is the environment the children come from and they have to deal with, and we have to understand that to be able to deal with them.
I share, I've shared in these sessions too, my experiences as an assistant principal riding the school bus to those neighborhoods and how that changed the relationship with some of the students that I dealt with because I understood better where they come from, where they are coming from.
That's super valuable.
Coming soon, we have implemented Teach Live. Teach Live is an avatar simulated classroom by the University of Central Florida. It's a research project that they developed, and basically you can simulate teaching practices with this virtual classroom. And it's very gaming-like, but it also is very real. When you put on the device, you're interacting with this classroom. And the research they have now behind it is four ten-minute sessions can change a teaching practice. So you're able to focus on classroom management, or if you're trying to work on your questioning skills, you can do a simulation with this classroom, and they respond the way our students do. They have a classroom set up with all the different dynamics of what you would see in a regular classroom. You have CJ who pulls out her cell phone and is texting her friends, and you're trying to get her to pay attention. So it's a new tool. We will do, use that with, you know, with a few teachers at a time to try it. They also have an adult avatar where a teacher can practice or an administrator can practice having some of those difficult conversations with an adult. Now, in both the adult situation and the classroom, you can have the compliance level of zero to one, who will do whatever they want you to do with just a few call-outs here and there, to a level five where desks are thrown, being thrown. So it's really kind of a different type of experience. We have scheduled a principal who wants to bring, have some of their beginning teachers talk to, practice talking to a parent about upcoming retention meetings, what's going to be the best placement for their child. And for our new teachers, that can be so uncomfortable, having that conversation with a parent who may be reluctant, or, you know, how do you say, okay, here's the data, you know we've been working on a year, have, you know, what is going to be the best situation to help your child be successful? So creating, we're providing some sessions where they can at least practice how they would say, and also practice with different levels of resistance, because you will have parents who completely comply, and you'll have the parents that are very resistant. So how do you talk through that? So these are simulations that we hope will also be supportive to our new teachers. Okay, so in a nutshell, those are some of the different professional learning opportunities and professional development that's been going on through our district. Do you have any questions for me?
Board members?
All the hard work. Thank you very much for all the hard work.
Thank you, Ms. Lindy.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carter, for facilitating that.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Board members, we've got an approval of minutes.
Let me approve this.
I have a motion by Ms. Powers, a second by Mr. Dodd to approve the minutes. Any discussion? All of us in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries five-zero. Terry, legal matters.
Ms. Powers had asked me, I think, the last week when we, about having these training for schools, doing here of context and other districts, and we said, do in-house, usually have speakers come in to do that. So, yeah, to find out the cost and who's, who's involved in that, and also, you know, to see my, this program. I'm not quite sure how I did that before. I would have to make sure that whatever, it was, I want to get a pre-certified that they would accept that through this training. So I'm still, I want you to know I'm working on that, I'm still taking a look at it, but it's not cut and paste. So, no.
The second question I'd ask you is about the interpretation of statute concerning Mr. Dixon, Mr. Dixon's attendance.
Yeah, I brought the statute, and unfortunately, I consider the statute to be a floor and not a ceiling, and so I think the statute is basically designed to make sure at a bare-bones minimum that we have someone, a member or a representative of the school board to be able to attend these meetings when it's going to affect the school district. But it is definitely a floor because the next sentence in the statute says, well, let me go back, says the school district appointed shall include a representative of the.
Can you, I apologize, just, just because now you're getting into the.
Yeah. Where it says that the county shall include a representative of the school district appointed by the school board as a non-voting member of the local planning agency or equivalent agency to attend those meetings at which the agency considers comprehensive plan amendments and rezonings that would, if approved, increase residential density of the property that is the subject of the application. I consider that a floor. You know, that is the bare-bones minimum that, that the county has to provide to us because it goes on that the next sentence says, however, this subsection does not prevent the governing body of the local government from granting voting status to the school board member. So, so I think what the legislature has done is said, you know, we're going to, we're going to prevent, you know, the local governing body from completely excluding the school district, but, you know, it's up from there. And unfortunately, the Board and County Commissioners has chosen to go to the absolute floor and not.
It's lower than the floor though, because the floor says to include.
Well, it says, it says to attend those meetings that would, if approved, increase residential density. Now, you know, I'm not quite sure how that works. I mean, if there's a meeting that is specifically going to be tied into increasing residential density, but I would imagine that the local planning agency probably talks about residential density.
That is a meeting.
Yeah, I'm not sure Mr. Dixon could probably expound upon that, but it seems like when you're the local planning agency, that residential density is probably one of the major topics that come up, so. But that's what, that's what the statute says. I can't help that they want to go to the bare-bones minimum, although I think that you will see that as a trend.
Along that same question or line of thinking, the interlocal agreement, what's the status on that?
On the.
Okay. Works for me. Board members, I would just think that we just got to keep in mind that when it comes to that interlocal agreement, that again, that may be the only document that we have when it comes to any teeth between the Board and County Commission and the Sichetown School Board. So at some point, that may be something some of these issues will have to address or potentially could address through the use of the interlocal agreement.
Other than that, I don't have anything. Thank you.
Mr. Carter? Do you have anything?
No, sir.
And Mr. Blocker?
I'm good, thank you.
Mr. Mullin?
Just a reminder, Friday is the elementary track meet at the Tonto High School.
Oh, excellent.
It gets to six o'clock. It starts. It starts, so we got about 400 kids participating.
Holy cow.
Your wife is doing some phenomenal things.
Unless she only does about 40 of those kids.
So that would be, when is that? I'm looking at April, never mind.
That's right.
Got it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mullin.
And I assume how many did we have at the kids' marathon?
Eight hundred and fifty. Oh, my goodness.
More importantly, did we beat Hernando? Or do we know yet?
We are the biggest in our district.
Thank you.
And the funny story is when they first started that, they wanted us to come to Marion County. I said, we don't go to Marion County. And they said, well, you better make sure that you have at least, what, 100, 200 kids? And we're going to worry about that. I think first year we had 600. So they love coming to Citrus County.
Ms. Hemel, do you have anything?
Um...
Okay. Mr. Dodd?
Well, I'm hoping that the county commission will revisit their decision dealing with Mr. Dixon and the planning committee. I hope that does take place and, you know, I want our relationship with them to be strong. And I know it's been somewhat challenged here, but I'm hoping that maybe they'll make some changes. Also, holding out hope for the state legislature this year to make some changes at the testing requirements that they put forward and hopefully, you know, our voice will be heard and I think we've done a lot to do that. And then the only other thing is I still continue to get out to schools, try to make an appearance and visit. As a new school board member, I've had a lot of very receptive administrators and teachers and it's fun being out there and that's a tribute to Mrs. Hemel, I thank superintendent that they're very open for us to come out and to visit and I really appreciate that a lot. And then, you know, we have spring break coming up, but that's also the week for the fair. And I just wanted to mention that I know several of us or probably all of us are involved at some level with that, but I am glad to see that we work with Fair Board and setting that calendar so we can get, allow kids to be able to attend that, that event. That's all I have.
Thank you, Ms. Hemel.
You can ask Mr. Simon. That's really non-negotiable when it goes to the calendar.
It really is. It's pretty much our expectation.
Fair week's pretty non-negotiable from my office to your committee.
The next, just so you know, next year, the fair changed it. So Citrus County aligned its calendar to the fair week and then we were notified a few weeks ago that they changed the date.
Is that right? Well, that's not our fault.
No, they apologized.
Right.
And they want us to know that it's with no...
Can they revisit?
Can they get free tickets to all the students?
Yeah, they do a snag.
They do have one night, I think they have an open night for, for students.
Well, it's not just the attendance for the kids, but those kids that are participating with the...
The FFA kids.
They're going to be absent a lot during the week because of their showing...
This is next year. They changed the vendor, so they have a whole different vendor who is facilitating the fair that has other commitments to Sarasota the same week. They changed it, so, and again...
And Ms. Balfour, we've done that before in the past when we had fair week along with school week and also some of the same week. So we have students come in the morning, they get done what they can, and then they usually run lunchtime because that is an issue.
Right. And we're just hoping, Mr. Dodd, that your wish comes true, that testing doesn't take place at that same time.
Wow, good.
Ms. Balfour, you went to school here, did they have fair day?
Yes.
Did they have state fair day?
We did not have state fair day.
We did when I went to the dorm. We did, we got off the bus.
Fair day, the buses all came, took kids to the fair.
You guys, the buses all were down to the fair.
And the teachers had to go with you.
Yes, that's right.
I can agree with that.
That's right.
And we may be facing that again, then...
What about five buses?
That's true.
Mr. Dodd, I'll tell you too, a former board member had, and for some reason I'm just having...
Bad one?
Yeah. Ms...
You're too young for a senior moment.
You're sweet, oh geez. It'll hit me. Anyway, no, I was thinking of, she was in Bill, before Bill.
Patience.
Thank you. Ms. Patience Knave said to me when I first got on, she said, when you have those tough days as a board member, just get out to a school. And even if she said if you sat in the parking lot and just watched the kids, which I thought was a little creepy.
I'll be checking the car out.
Exactly. The SROs may come and knock you out, but they did say get out to a school and it just, it all kind of comes back together. So thanks for going out and doing that because it is valuable. So, Ms. Ginger?
I just want to thank everybody for their prayers and concern. I am vertical and I feel a whole lot better. Thank you. Thank you.
We've got the art show over at the courthouse right now from five to seven. Rush right over for the last 20 minutes. Also, I commend you for what you're doing with the training pressures that are out there. I took it upon myself to go ahead and put myself in a testing situation and I took the writing test a couple of times at the elementary and at the middle school level. And it was, it's very challenging and I'm very impressed with how the teachers are working together to make sure that they have a deep understanding of the rubric. And another thing I wanted to give Mr. Dixon an opportunity to just give a very, very brief summary of the long-range planning committee that I attended recently. And back to recognizing the deep understanding of history within this community, Mr. Dixon is just so knowledgeable and I just want to express my appreciation for where you've been, where we are now, and please tell us where we're going with your future plans.
Thank you. And I really want to just reiterate how much I appreciate the board's letter that you sent to the Board of County Commissioners. I really appreciate that. There are a few projects I would like to lift out and I was going to mention one of these projects to you in a future presentation. The Floral City Wastewater Treatment Project is under, well underway and should be completed in April or May. So we'll be basically out of the sewer business, all over the county. We basically got done away with all of our onsite wastewater treatment plants with the exception of the marine science station, which is a package, I mean, it's not a packaged plant, but it's a, it's an onsite facility. But that's probably going to be gone in a few years too because the city of Crystal River is looking at running sewer down Fort Island Gulf Beach. So, you know, we may be doing away with that one as well. So we'll be out of the sewer business. The Empernis Middle School Transplantation Project, I know that we got a letter from DOT, I think we, I copied it to you on email. Basically, they determined that a traffic light is not warranted at this time, but they haven't told us whether or not that, what that means when the four-laning is complete. So I think when the four-laning is complete, we'll see the traffic light because I don't know of any other school anywhere on a four-lane road that doesn't have a traffic light. So I think we'll see the traffic light and that is in our five-year work plan. The project that I was going to mention to you is the Pleasant Grove Elementary School Sidewalk Project. Lynn Kirby has asked us to look at the potential of getting a Safe Routes to School grant or another type of funding source for a sidewalk because there are parents at that particular school that walk and there's some safety concerns. And we found that the, the best funding source is the MPO. I know you heard a project earlier today that was a, an MPO project and you did a resolution to put that on the list. We actually have two projects that we've developed in-house to, to go on that list. One is our Forest Ridge Elementary Project, which is our highest priority project, or has been our highest priority project. It services the most students. Basically, within a two-mile radius of that school, you have like 500 students. So it's the highest number of students inside the two-mile radius in Citrus County. So that would be my recommendation for your highest project. But the MPO has asked that to come to before the school board and make a presentation to you and rank those projects. So in April, we're going to be bringing forward a little presentation with a proposed ranking. And there's two projects that, that we have developed in-house. One is Forest Ridge, which has been in the works for several years. It's our highest priority because of the number of students. The second would be Pleasant Grove, which Ms. Kirby's proposed, and it affects 100 or so students. We've done analysis of that and we've looked at it and I've also mentioned it to the city of Empernis and they're supportive of it. And then there's one other project that came before the MPO that didn't come through us and it's Rock Crusher Elementary. It's basically a sidewalk that would run the entire length of Rock Crusher Road and so we would rank that third simply because we didn't propose it and it doesn't impact that many students. But it was for, proposed by a citizen for other reasons, but it goes right by the school. So there's three projects and first would be Forest Ridge, the second would be Pleasant Grove, and then third would be Rock Crusher. The impact fee update, I just wanted to mention to you that the final public hearing before the county commission is scheduled for April 28th. It was discussed at the long-range planning committee. The Pine Ridge School Site, of course, is the YMCA, next to the YMCA, and the YMCA is scheduled to break ground on May 1st. So we're getting real close to seeing a YMCA. We will be coming before you for a agreement to, to maintain the roadway that goes into the YMCA because the school board owns that road, but the Y will have to pay for it and maintain it until the school is eventually built. So you'll be seeing an agreement for that. The Beverly Hills Sidewalk Project, I already mentioned. And the last but not least, of course, is the Sun Coast Parkway. And we are waiting to see that under construction by, I believe, June 1st. We're going to see probably quite a bit of activity in Citrus County when that's, when that starts. So I'm thinking that, you know, as part of my enrollment report that I do for the rezoning, if you look at that, it tells you what your enrollment projections or what your actual enrollment has been for the last five years of all of your schools. And for the first year, in several years, we're exactly flat. I think we were down two students from the previous year and we've been going down, 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 but we're not going down anymore. So I think we're in the rebound, we're in the upswing in the Sun Coast Parkway, I believe. And then there's another couple of paragraphs in there about the Duke Energy Plant and how many employees that that's going to bring to the area of temporary construction employees. It's quite a few that'll be here for a couple of years, so...
Does the board own any property, the school board own any property that butts the Sun Coast Parkway? I don't, off the top of my head, I, I saw that proposed route, but I don't know, is there any school board property that butts it?
Not that I'm, not directly that I'm aware of.
The closest may be Pine Ridge, the Pine Ridge site?
It's close to it. And, but we own a lot of property. The school board's the largest landowner except for the state and the county. We own property all, you own property all over the county. A lot of it's not built.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So we wish we did, though.
And then from giveaway, I don't know.
So, thank you, Mr. Dixon.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Ms. Powers?
I'll just add on to what Sandy was saying, that the art teachers are showing tonight, it ends at seven o'clock, it's a little welcome, but they're going to continue showing their artwork for several more weeks, I think it's the 12th of March, our April's going to be October, April, so we'll miss it tonight, I think, but please go down and take a look at the art teachers work out before they have to stop.
Did you see the moon pie in the paper? There's a picture, Carly was here, she had taken of it, it's in the paper and it's, a teacher did a sculpture, actually Jen Faust at Crystal River Middle.
Yes, yes.
And it was just neat, it was a little high, it had all moon things on the side of it.
I saw that. I looked at it to a great test.
Yeah, that's, it was really, really cute. It...
That's good. Second, this Friday, 8:00 AM, the Salvation Army has invited school board members to attend a breakfast and we need a count, so if you, if any of us is going to attend, if you give it to Liz, so she can call it a count for breakfast, but it's at 8:00 AM, First United Methods Church, and it's 8-8-3-1 West Bradshaw Street, which is at the end of Uly Drive.
Relation?
Maybe, maybe. Yeah, yeah. Don't go there. But anyhow, it's appreciation breakfast because the school system has been very good for Genus and supporting Salvation Army in terms of the angel tree and all, so they wanted to say thank you.
That's really cool. When is that again, you said?
Friday morning. Friday morning, 8:00 AM.
That's right.
So it's to be in Tallahassee, so it's...
So it'll be in Tallahassee?
And that's it.
Ms. Hemel, you got something?
Knowing that you all will be in Tallahassee and they get asked by the school board members about testing, and I just want to say to Dr. Gaddis, his team, Steve Chairman's group, Research Accountability Services, Mark Clodagh and his team, they, they've literally sat in front of computers, monitored our bandwidth to make sure that things went as well as they did. We had a few hiccups. It was funny, I went and talked to Commissioner Stewart last night, she said, what about your opt-out? I kind of chuckled because I said, well, we had five phone calls and I think two may opt-out, we think one was opting out. So they were starting to hear better things through the state, but what the state has gone through versus what our district has gone through, it's just, you can't even compare. So I just want to thank all the staff for making it happen because we were ready for it. Other districts knew it was coming, we knew it was coming, and we were prepared for it. So nice job. Nice job.
You're here. I have a couple of things. First of all, just to, housekeeping item, Ms. Bryant, earlier we had a workshop and we were talking about some things. We had one remaining thing that I wanted just, housekeeping on. We've been talking about doing polls, automatic polls versus non-automatic polls. One of the items that was being talked about, or two of the items, had to do with the HR Golden Rod. We kind of split as to whether that would be pulled or not. Ms. Powers and I felt like we wanted to keep it the way we have had it. Mr. Dodd was, I think, and I don't want to speak for you, Mr. Dodd, you can share.
Yeah, I'm kind of either way on it. I could see us putting on the consent agenda, I don't have a problem with that, or I can, yes, please, keep it. But...
And Ms. Balfour had, had an opinion.
Right, and I kind of went along, I think you're getting to the next point in budget.
Yeah, that was, and that was going to be the next one, and then the, the budget amendments. But the first one, I think that we were still, was the...
Was Golden Rod.
Was the Golden Rod.
Right. So we kind of wanted, you weren't able to be there, so...
Do we want to put it on consent agenda? Is that the question?
The question is whether we do. I, I felt like there was still an opening that we needed to keep that because that was somewhat of our transparency and responsibility.
Anybody, as far as the idea, any board member can pull it from the consent agenda if they have anything that they want to spotlight as far as somebody retiring or for whatever reason, but because it is basically just a procedural piece that, as far as the statutory obligation, we as board members have no power at all to hire, fire, put any kind of position out there. Reviewing job descriptions, it wouldn't have anything to do with that. We would still review job descriptions, it's just the simple placement of staff. Statutorily, we can't make those decisions, so it just becomes just procedure. Again, it was, was just a suggestion to help streamline. If you want to pull it at any time, you certainly can, but we're just trying to establish what a consistent consent agenda looks like.
My little concern is the, every, every now and then, we have to terminate someone and I like the fact that it's out there.
Well, and that's when you can pull it and just make sure it is out there. We're just talking as far as a routine.
And just for clarification, we do both either recommend, we're new hires, it is a just cause. So every time we do statutorily hire, we do statutorily fire. Superintendent cannot do that. That is, that is the responsibility of the board. It may be perceived as some as a pass-through. I believe it is an obligation that we have. I will tell you, for what it's worth, I will be putting it on as an automatic pull from me if it's not, because I believe it's that important. So, but I, I think it's important.
And I definitely believe it's important too. I also have had a misperception out there that's been shared with, because it is something that we have to do, it's part of the routine of business, there's also a perception out there that we, as board members, have control over who is hired and who is fired or whatever's happening as far as movement within the district. And even if, if there is something that's egregious that we're aware of, it's our obligation to speak up and share that, but it's just a standard procedure, we do not have the responsibility of staffing. It's just that simple. But I can definitely understand and relate. Anytime anybody needs something pulled and they want to spotlight for whatever reason, yes, I have no objection at all to that. Again, just looking for an ability to try to streamline our agenda and make it a little bit more usable. little bit more usable, user-friendly.
Ms. Bryant, do you have any?
I would, I'd have to agree with Mr. Kennedy that we need to leave it...
Just leave it open?
Sure.
The other one became, Ms. Bryant, of the budget amendments, and whether we, we've talked about putting right now, as we did today, the setting of the public meetings, the, I'm sorry, the public, um...
Hearings.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Dogg, it's gotten late. The public hearings, we put on a consent agenda, as opposed to an automatic poll, as we did today. It can still be pulled, but question is, though, on the budget amendments, and I don't know that we ever really even had a consensus earlier, one way or the other. I, I didn't have as strong a feeling on that, because I felt like I could pull it if there was an issue that I had. That was my, my personal feeling, and I don't know if, if anyone else had strong feelings. Okay? So, the direction is, we're gonna keep on the automatics, the HR Golden Rod, but we'll keep the other two can go on consent.
Okay.
And the other things I would, thank you, board members, by the way. The other things that I wanted to share is, one, I will not be going to legislative days, some of you may or may not have gotten that feedback, but I, I won't be doing that. I do a fair amount of lobbying on it, and I actually have some meetings scheduled. But a couple of things, since some of you will be going, I think you're bringing up some students, so I'm pleased about that. There is a educational bill there that I am almost scared to get excited about, because it's that potentially good. And I know you're getting roofs updates, but, but that is PCB EDC 1504. This is the language, I think, that's the most critical and most encouraging. It is to repeal the required remediation for middle school students who score a one or two on the ELA FSB, and repeals the requirement for remediation of the high school students who score a one or two on the ELA Assessment and the Algebra I EOC. We've talked about for years, it's not that we don't believe in remediation, we do believe in remediation. We'll continue as a district to remediate, whether, if this is passed or not. But we have students, for example, that can't take career and technical education courses because we must put them in a Level One remediation course. This will certainly be a game changer, and I think of, for example, our welding suites, that it would be nice to get those welding suites going from instead of being just reading classrooms back into welding suites that are used. So, I'm encouraged by that, so if, if and when you have that conversation, that's one of it. I'm, I'm sure Ms. Smith would, would share with you, one of the things that I don't think we still have gone far enough is in the VAM and evaluational equity. As I have always stated, the VAM needs to die a horrible death. And, and I don't know that there's many that disagree with that, but they are still not addressing it. So, while they are taking on testing, they are not taking on the VAM, they are not taking on the evaluational process. There is some changes, they're talking about adding a third, and a third, and a third, instead of a 50% in that particular bill. Still doesn't really address, though, some of the underlying issues. So, in conversations, I, I do, I would encourage you to still have that. You know, I want to, again...
I forgot if you're going to breakfast on Friday.
Yeah, no, I know, I'm not, I'm going to a different, I'm actually meeting with United Way about CTE courses.
What's the point of staying home if you're not gonna go to the...
That's, exactly, I know. I, I'm glad, Ms. Hamilton, you talked about the FSA testing and the success in Citrus County, because it is not what has been happening around the state. It is totally due to our district, our school staffs, administration, our teachers, our parents, our food staff, our custodians, our bus drivers, and the whole team, which is remarkable where we're at. But here's still the problem, those young students are still challenged. I was on Facebook last night, watching and reading some of the posts from parents, and I wanted to share with you some of the feedback. And this is the one that breaks my heart the most. "I'm so glad I decided to put my son at a private school, putting my daughter there next year as well. Yes, I'm one of those public school educators that has half my kids in private school. I move them all there, but my daughter enjoys the Health Academy just too much." Another one went on to talk about, "And they need to spend two hours reading, annotating, planning, and writing, but all at once, this is just too overwhelming. How about those writing tests being developed beyond their capacity? They're expecting nine and 10-year-olds to think abstractly, which do not occur until they're at least 12 years old. How are any of them going to do well at this?" And then one here that just said, "It's only kindergarten this year, and I'm seriously looking at going to homeschool after this year. We love our elementary school, but we just can't get over the amount of testing that's being required. The school, the students and the parents shouldn't be this stressed." And this last one's from a parent and school board member, and I'm saying to them, "Enough. Enough is enough. Our kids are suffering every day. Stop this obsessive testing and let us teach our students and determine this locally." So, when you get up there, share that message from another parent. With that, I have nothing else, so is there anything else to come before this board? If there's nothing else, we are chucked.